Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome everyone here to the Monday, October 18th, 2021 Board of Commissioners Meeting. We had a work session at 4:30 on capital projects and finance review. And I'd like to call this to order with our first item, the invocation of pledge of allegiance and the approval of the -- excuse me. The first item is the invocation of pledge of allegiance. We don't have anybody signed up to lead us in that. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to lead us in the invocation of pledge of allegiance? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask Commissioner Jarvis, since she would do the honors tonight.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to freely gather in this place to do the business of Currituck County. We ask for your guidance, your wisdom in making decisions tonight that benefit this beautiful county. We also ask that you safely got us home tonight as we go in many directions to our homes. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. The next item we have is the approval of the agenda. Motion for approval, is there any changes that need to be made?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Beaumont. Any further questions? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Chair is approved. Next item is public comment. This is a time for the citizens of Currituck County to come before this board and speak freely on your mind of any items, anything you want to talk about, and we will listen intently. It's your time to speak on anything you'd like. We welcome everyone to come before us and tell us, you know, good, bad thoughts. So I have one person signed up right now, and that's going to be starting off with Cameron Lowe. If you could just state your name and address for the records, please.
Sure thing. My name is Cameron Lowe, 619 Idlet Road, and I would like to talk about extension for just a minute. So I'll keep it brief. I've got some good news for you guys. But before I do, I know you know, but I just have to say for everybody's benefit that North Carolina Cooperative Extension is a partnership between Currituck County Government and our land-grant universities, and our primary purpose here in Currituck is to take the research conducted at those universities and package them into educational programs that benefit our citizens here in Currituck. And we do that primarily in the areas of agriculture, 4H and youth development, foods and nutrition, and community development. And I'm going to introduce Cindy here to you in just a second, but before I do, I have to take just a brief second to brag on my staff. We usually bring you a report to the people, and of course, COVID kind of sidelined all those efforts in 2020 and early 2021, and so I just wanted to bring you a couple of highlights. In 2020, when we had to cease face-to-face programming, I am so proud of the work that my team did in pivoting to an all-online, a virtual method of program delivery. These guys delivered 363 educational programs in 2020 in the midst of a shutdown. They reached over a million and a half people. Most of those, of course, were virtual contacts, but 7,000-plus of those were face-to-face online, so in real-time type contact. So I'm extremely proud of the things that they did in 2020. And in the first six months of 2021, they're making the same kind of progress, moving back to face-to-face instruction, keeping some of those things we learned in terms of virtual programming and offering some hybrid educational programs. We're launching a new podcast rooted in Currituck. Commissioner Etheridge, I think your episode will come out this week, so be looking for that, but as a way to preserve our agricultural heritage while educating folks on the importance of agriculture. And most notably here recently, we did the Currituck Farm Festival a couple of weeks ago that went fantastic. It was a great opportunity to say thank you to our county farmers while educating our public on the importance of agriculture here in Currituck County. So we wanted to extend a thank you to you all for your support of that effort and just let you know how much we are looking forward to doing that again in 2022. Now for the good news in the introduction. So here in Currituck, we have our first-ever North Carolina A&amp;T-supported agent position that is going to be housed here in Currituck, and that is Ms. Cynthia Knudsen. Cynthia is our area small farms specialist. Her -- she's fully funded by North Carolina A&amp;T State University, but her central office will be right here in Currituck County, and she will serve small farmers throughout northeast North Carolina. So I'll just let Cindy introduce herself and tell you a little bit about her work very briefly.
I'll look for the red light. Come on.
Don't worry about any red lights.
Hi. So my name is Cynthia, or Cindy Knudsen is how I prefer to be called. I will be working in 14 counties in northeast North Carolina, so basically from here all the way over to Halifax County and then down to Beaufort County and that whole kind of triangle in between. So it's a lot of area to cover, but I'm working with small farmers, beginning farmers, and limited resource farmers. And my background is working with Virginia Cooperative Extension in the past as a field crops agent, so I have a lot of experience with larger-scale agriculture. And then myself have farmed, have raised livestock, and done high-tunnel hydroponic and field vegetable production, and will bring those resources to the farmers doing educational programs, field demonstrations, and research plots, and also one-on-one consultations with farmers. So I did give everyone my card. Please feel free to pass that information on to anyone you might think could use it. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions, Board?
I would say now that she's in North Carolina, she's in the real world.
Well, I have to admit, when I worked for Virginia Cooperative Extension, we used David Jordan from NC State all the time. He's such a good resource. So we've always kind of felt a little attachment to North Carolina Cooperative Extension also.
I just would like to say Cameron and her staff, they do a phenomenal job on just so much stuff. I talked to Sheila Gregory today about a couple things. Her staff is so helpful, I mean, just in all aspects with the kids, with the 4H and the different camps and all, the educational stuff that they do, they do a really, really good job over there. And like I said, yeah, and they're -- as far as on county buildings too, if you use one of that county building over there, they will get on you, so you better make sure it's clean when you're done and put away.
Turn the lights off and lock the doors.
Properly. But no, they do a good job. I mean, like I said, it shows from their leadership down, and they -- everybody cares.
Yes, they do. They great pride in their work. Thank you.
Well, thank you again. Welcome. Great asset for our area here. We look forward to seeing you out there, and it'll be great. So thanks again. Okay, that's the only person I had sign up under public comments. Did anyone come in late that would like to speak on a topic of public comment that didn't sign up? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comments and move on to our next item of Commissioners' Report. And I think today I'm going to start off to my right, if I could, with Commissioner Owen Etheridge.
Nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kevin McCord.
Christmas Parade is on. You can contact myself or Sheila Gregory. The flyer will go on the county website. It's October 3rd. Originally, we were going to do it on the 10th.
December.
I'm sorry, December. December.
2022.
2021. But yeah, no, the Christmas Parade, December 3rd at 7 o'clock, same as it has been in the past. We won't -- we didn't have it in 2020, obviously, because of COVID. But look on the county website, the Cooperative Extension, the Sheriff's Office, the FOP and Cooperative Extension are putting that on. That's a great event. I mean, we usually have 1,000 people. I know in 2019, 2018, there was well over 1,000 people. It's an outside event, so you can be outside and be safe. Friday, I had the privilege of playing in the high school golf tournament at Eagle Creek. Nice event. They raised close to probably $10,000 for the high school baseball program. I don't -- if you've got kids that play on the ball team, former alumni. We have probably one of the nicest baseball fields in the area, and Coach Hill and them, they do a really good job, and they're trying to just better the field, better the program, and, you know, everybody always needs more money for something. So like I said, it was a nice event. They had almost 100 players. This week, signage in the school zones is going in. It might have came this afternoon after I left, but we had a grant for a public safety grant through the schools, or school safety grant. They're supposed to be here. I'm meeting with NC DOT tomorrow to mark where they're going to go at in the nap in the high school school zone. Those are two hot topics. COVID gets you again. They would have been here August 15th. They would have been here before the school year started was the plan, but they're going to be here this week, so, and put up. Two more things. The 22nd of October is trunk-or-treat at Mayock Elementary, or it's their fall festival, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Tons of fun stuff for people to do on a Friday night. And Charbrooke Elementary School is their trunk-or-treat from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. At Charbrooke Elementary School, come by, get candy. I'll be at that event donating candy to kids. And there's one more big event on the 23rd. Kingdom Real Estate is doing a benefit for the Julie that was -- her life was taken from the wreck right in front of the high school. They're going to do a benefit, and all the proceeds from that are going to go to that family. So that's a good thing. Those are just two things this week. So like I said, stay active in your community, and that's it for me.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Beaumont.
One big thing I want to put out is we are always looking for folks to help the county, specifically through the advisory panels. We're currently down several positions within the Veterans Advisory Board. So if you're a military veteran and would like to help support the community and increase awareness and help the veterans within Currituck County, please get -- there's an application you can pull off the internet, fill it out, and then if you get it to LeAnn, and it'll be routed for that board. And we're currently shy at least one position in the Fire Advisory Board as well. So we are always looking for board members, and if, you know, you want to get involved with the county, best way to do that is to get on advisory board or two. Actually, I guess one at a time, and then just go to the next board, broadening your experience. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Beaumont. And just a quick little, I'll just piggyback on that. I do now have an opening on a planning board in my district down in the Grandee-Papa Ranch area. So please, if you want to get involved with your community, it's a good way to get on one of these boards. You can go to the website, you can call our clerk to the board. LeAnn can help you walk you through that if need be, and it helps us to help the community. So, and the fire departments, just again, I'm just gonna say we're getting into the season with fireplaces now and fires, so please be supportive any way you can to volunteer fire departments. And Halloween, I believe, is on a weekend this year, so remember, you're gonna have a lot of little ones running around and walking, and be careful out there in the roadways. During the weekend, you're probably gonna have a lot of people this year out there, so just be safe. And that's all for tonight. Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna be a little long-winded tonight, I apologize. I attended an economic symposium, I guess, or conference the other day at Elizabeth State University. A lot of good information came out of that, and I have about four pages of notes, and so I'm gonna go through these and try not to jump around too much, get through this. But one of the big things there was renewable energy. Some people may have heard of the Kitty Hawk Wind Project. It's offshore wind-powered project. While it's named Kitty Hawk, it's 27 miles off of our coast in Corolla, and all the power basically from that will go up to Virginia and out to the Northeast Power Grid. They were touting this as a great thing for North Carolina, but virtually no money is coming in in North Carolina out of this. They're hopefully that -- hopeful that some companies will produce some products, and there'll be second or third-tier effects to these other areas, and those products will then be sold to the company that is producing this power grid. It's a company called Avengrid Renewables, and they are funding it themselves. So the good news is North Carolina is not forking out a bunch of money for power that's going to leave our state and go up to the Northeast Power Grid. They're building it in hopes, obviously, they've got a buyer on the back end. The Northeast is in serious need of energy. So they talked about that for a little while. I don't really know how much it really impacts North Carolina, and it seemed to be a big deal for them, but I just don't think it's going to impact us that much, other than it's taking away available space off of our shores. So it's a multi-multi-year project to get it done. As I said, it is more than 25 miles offshore, and since that power's not going to come into North Carolina, it's not really benefiting us, other than if we wanted to expand into offshore wind as a state, it has now taken up part of that playground area. And it's, so it's, in some respects, may be a detriment to us in the future if green energy is the way that we are headed, and it certainly seems that way, as the governor's got a new green energy initiative to go carbon -- we're either trying to get carbon-neutral by 2050, or decarbonizing by 2050 was how they stated it. We talked about it a little bit in our meeting, and it's interesting, looking at, in our work session, actually, the county attorney, county manager brought it up, you know, we just had a work session on how much money we're going to have to spend as our county grows and increases in population, the service demand increase, whether it be trash, schools, any innumerable number of things that are out there. But we have a good situation in that we are expanding and we are growing. Control growth is probably the key to that. But these other counties, Chilwell, Pascatank, Quamans, they are, they're actually shrinking. And so that's going to affect their tax base ultimately, what business is going to stick around if you're losing population. And so for us, it's a growing pain at this point in our time, but it is a good sign that, you know, obviously, we know people want to come here, and it's just how to control that growth and spending that goes with that growth, so that we don't impact our taxpayers that much. But it was interesting that they brought that up as an economic problem for this region. Of the 10 counties that are kind of make up this region, ourselves and Dare are in probably the best financial shape out of all of them with what's going on. Our unemployment is 4.3%. An interesting thing for people that own a business here, from North Carolina workforce development, the labor force has roughly 77,000 people in it, in our region. There's 72,000 people employed, so that's 5,000 unemployed, but the real number is there's 90,000 jobs available. So we are short no matter what we do. If we put those 5,000 people that are currently on the unemployment rolls locally back into the workforce, those jobs, they're still not going to fill all the jobs. And part of the discussion came up, well, where do they go? Right? We had people before for jobs, before COVID, and the, nobody has a good answer for where those people actually went that filled those positions. In some cases, they think a lot of women came out of the workforce and are staying home now, and whether they're homeschooling, they have to work remotely from home, or they can't work remotely from home, but they also have to be there to take care of small children that can't be left at home. So we've kind of hit a weird spot in addition to all the other problems, but it was very interesting to see that we actually had more jobs than people available to fill those jobs, no matter what happens with the economy. NC Works, for those of you that are looking for work, they have a lot of good programs, and the North Carolina Workforce Development Board is there for that purpose. If you're looking for a job and need help or use with a computer, they'll help you build a resume. They'll help further your education. They have some grant funding in place to help educate you and do different things to get you into the workforce or into a better job. So if you're here locally and you're not liking where you're at, talk to them. They're there for you. That is what they do. They offer on-the-job training experience for businesses. They will reimburse up to 50% of a new hire salary for five months to help get a new person in, to help train them, so that you don't have to incur all the expense of bringing someone up to speed. So if you're a business owner, you may want to contact them, as they have stuff available for you as well. Commissioner Beaumont's probably more averse on this than I am, but we had the ARPO come out, and they talk about the Rural Planning Office, basically decides what happens with our roads, and talk about the pot of money that they have to spend on our roads. In the future, this region is not going to get a lot of money. We're fighting for what we get. The metropolitan areas are the ones that really get the funding, and the state is 60% -- 60% of their funding comes from gas tax, and they are woefully underfunded. When no one drove under COVID, their money disappeared. When people started driving again, the formula they used is really outdated, and it was put in when people were getting 10 miles to the gallon in their carbureted car. Well, that's not the case anymore. So the funding for this doesn't actually work for the state anymore, meet the state's needs and the growing demands of the state. Additionally, you know, your electric cars and other things don't pay to use the roads. So they're working through a very cumbersome project to try and figure out how to raise the funds necessary. If the General Assembly's not going to give them the money to cover it, then the roads are going to go further into disrepair, projects are not going to get done, and we're just going to see, you know, a greater deterioration, and it costs more in the end to fix it later than to deal with it now. So they are working with that funding formula now, trying to figure that out, and hopefully they will. If you're a bridge person, for the Mid-Currituck Bridge, that project is scheduled to move along. They have, I believe it's two federal permits they're waiting on. When those come in, they're going to be moving along with that project. That is funded differently through the Turnpike Authority, because it is a toll bridge, is completely different in how it's funded. So as people talk about funding, it doesn't affect that particular project. So if you're a proponent of the bridge, good news. If you don't like the bridge, bad news. It just depends on where you fall on that one. A lot of people know about the Alligator Bridge needing to be repaired. That is not scheduled for another 10 years, and it's going to be about $150 million just for a two-lane bridge. If they go out to a four-lane bridge, you're looking at $300 million, and God knows what the material costs will be when they actually get to that in 10 years. So, and this, I don't know if you've heard this or not, but this is flat off the presses. So in tourism, we've gained market share, and we had several tourists and heads come in and talk to us, and Cameron was there, Cameron Kugler, our in-house person, she did a great job presenting. Cameron was actually there, and I realized when she went to speak, they split the room up. I was on the wrong side. I was on tours, I'm thinking I learned something new, and I did learn a little bit of something new, but Cameron had the audience fired up pretty good on the other side, as she usually does. She has a lot of energy, so sorry I missed out on her presentation. But we have started working with Dare County and the North Carolina Tourism and cross-promoting things like beach safety and doing different things to try and move people regionally. When I first came on the Tourism Advisory Board, Owen was the commissioner to that board many, many moons ago, and the first thing was trying to figure out how to beat Dare County. How can we beat Dare County to get people to Corolla? And it's interesting to see how that has flipped over the years, that now it's, how can we work together and benefit each other through this process to bring people into both of our counties? And it's working with businesses that are across. I see John Harris out here, he has multiple locations in both counties, and so it's working with those businesses that have locations in both counties as well. And I think that's about it for me. That's enough long-windedness this evening, but it was, I'm good for probably till Christmas. So, but it was a great meeting, and I learned a lot from it, and the come-away is that we have a very bright future here. We put the right tools in the right places, and we're good to go. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner White. A lot of good information out there, and I would agree, we got some good stuff happening in Currituck. Next is Commissioner Katie Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Wednesday, I attended the health and wellness event sponsored by the Currituck senior citizens. It was well-attended. They had over 90 people attend, and there was plenty of information for our seniors and our community. They gave out information about Medicare, emergency management, medical services, and so many other services that are available to our citizens was showcased for these senior citizens. The sheriff's department also provided a drop-off where if you had unused medicine, you could drop it and make sure that it didn't get into the wrong hands. And you could also get your flu shot. So there was lots and lots of things going on for our seniors. And I'd like to thank all of the people in the county who participated in helping to get the information out to the seniors, and also to the senior citizen employees for making this happen. It was a very nice event. And ho, 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 it's that time of the year again. Operation Santa 2021 administered by the Currituck County Department of Social Services underway. The program serves hundreds of children and families each year residing in our county, or county foster children in foster care. They also do food baskets to serve the disabled and the elderly adults who need a little extra help. It's a wonderful way to help someone have a Merry Christmas. All of your donations are tax-deductible, and it's easier than ever this year, because now you can use PayPal. You can go online and use PayPal to make a contribution. Also, if you'd like more information, you can contact the director, Samantha Hurd, at 232-6040, or Heather Corbell at 232-6042, or you can email at operation.santa@currituckcountync.gov. So we ask that you please make a donation to this worthy cause, and if you're a county employee, don't forget $2 Friday where you can wear your jeans, and this will help out Operation Santa too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. And now Commissioner Jarvis.
Thank you. Last Tuesday, I attended the monthly meeting of the Juvenile Crime and Prevention, Crime Prevention Council. Our guest speaker was Ms. Stephanie Benton with Beloved Haven, and she spoke on the alarming rise of our, especially young girls, and the human sex trafficking issue in our region, which was shocking and frightening, some of the stories she told. But I came away hopeful that with the cooperation of law enforcement, social services, and our government entities in the region, we can help prevent this fate for many of our young girls, especially here in Currituck County. In 2019, there were 266 cases of sex trafficking reported to the National Human Trafficking Hotline, ranking North Carolina as the 11th state out of 50. I encourage parents and community members to go to belovedhaven.org to find out more information and how to talk to your young people, your young girls and young boys about how to avoid the pitfalls that so many young people fall into, especially with social media, TikTok, Instagram, and the likes, so we can help curb this problem and bring it to an end in our community. And finally, this fall, COA celebrated its 60th year of student enrollment in the region. COA changes lives through its commitment by offering not only higher education and degrees, but also continuing ed. And Bob mentioned NC Works. COA partners with NC Works and other entities to provide scholarships and change lives. To quote a presentation I sat through, "It is a pathway for opportunity." And I encourage you, if you're looking for a new trade, if you're looking for a new line of work, if you want to be part of that resignation tsunami, and try something new, COA can change your life, and it has been an asset to our region. And here is to 60 more years and beyond for an even brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. And now we have our county manager slash county attorney report.
It was not just because of age or free lunch that I also attended the Senior Health and Fitness Day last Wednesday. And as Commissioner Etheridge reported, Stacy Joseph and her staff did a wonderful job putting together a great program and great resources for the seniors and me to access in the county. Secondly, the plans for the Dune Walkovers at Carl, Mackerel, and Dolphin Streets in Wellhead Subdivision are now complete, but the staff needs some direction from the board as as we're preparing to put them out to bid, what you would like to see included in the bid. The design and engineer included, in addition to seating, which was going to be part of the bid on top of the dune decks, included a shower, water fountain, and portage on at each of the three locations. And so looking for direction now from the board as to whether you would like to bid these projects out to include water fountain, shower, portage on, or any combination of the three. I would tell you, there has been some concern expressed by Public Works Department that due to staffing issues, they were a little concerned about the increased potential for maintenance of those three items. But looking now to the board for some direction so we can go ahead and get this bid underway for next season.
So I guess I'll jump in on that a little bit. I had a conversation with the engineer and he said, hey, you know, I've come up with these other things. And one were the benches at the top, which I thought was great. And I don't know about, I don't care about having portages at the bottom. I think it's kind of just not the message you want to send, and or water fountains per se. But certainly the rinse-off shower or foot rinse or whatever might be something we're talking about.
If you run a foot rinse showers...
Yeah, both. I mean, they usually a combo, right? You got the over/under. Water fountains, I don't...
I agree.
Yeah. And a water fountain seems like just a kind of a maintenance thing. People are pulling coolers to the beach. They're, you know, but as far as rinsing off, not having to trudge back three blocks to your house might be kind of nice. So, yeah, but there will be a cost addition to that. And I talked with Ike about if we don't do it, maybe having a maintenance contract in place with someone to provide service to repair them as needed. It's, you know, just get a plumber to do it instead of putting that extra burden on our staff. It's probably not that big a deal for occasional shower head replacement or valve replacement. And they're not trying to find plumbing parts and do all that stuff, so.
Okay.
It would be worth, it'd be interesting to know what that might be. I'm just, somebody leaves the shower on, ties the shower on, you know, walks away.
In today's TikTok world, that's, we're going to look at our high school bathrooms.
Well, there's only one.
I know some of the foot things is activated by your foot going under.
This is a little spring-loaded valve that they do it, but it was an interesting...
It's an interesting thought.
Right. And it's just a higher level of service to, as we spent all this money to build these nice walkways.
Okay, so, I mean, we could certainly, do we need, you need direction tonight or can we think about it?
I don't think we need direction tonight, although we're running a little tight on time so they can be completed by next season.
Mike's?
Yeah, okay.
So continuing the thought process, right, we're trying to encourage people to use the public parking.
Yep.
And that's, I mean, the amount of folks that are in the lots, that's on the rise, right? So we're dispersing the people amongst the beach. It'd be, you know, the beaches that have full service, they're jammed. I mean, they're absolutely packed. So the shower, you know, for folks, I guess what I'm thinking is, I'm not sure Coral would be a great place to put that, but Benito...
Right, with the parking lot right there.
You know, where we have parking lots, I think that would be a far better place to put like a shower wash-off and then they could get in their cars. Just about everybody using Coral, for example, they're on their way home where there's probably an outside shower anyway.
Right.
Would the board like maybe a day or two to think about this or is the board ready to make, I mean, some more information?
I'm ready.
You ready?
Yeah, I like the idea of a shower.
All right, if nobody's opposed, then go ahead.
Say that again?
A shower.
Okay.
Some way to rinse off.
Okay, but again, these aren't the beaches, these are not the beaches with a parking lot.
I thought you said whenever was.
Well, Benito is.
Benito is not included in this package.
Right, it's not in this particular package. But the flip side of it is, you know, when you guys got to walk home, you got to go three blocks back with all your stuff and your sand and various regions. And so it's, you know, we know how you feel about showers.
I think we need showers as well because if you're walking and you've got sand on your feet and you're trying to put them in your flip-flops, that's very uncomfortable to walk with. So that's just me. I would prefer to have my feet clean before I put them into my flip-flops.
I mean, it sounds like then the majority of the board is probably ready to act on this tonight, so I'll ask the board then to make a motion.
Well, I think you don't...
Get a price?
Do you need a motion for it or just...
Would you like me to come back with additional price for that?
Yes.
How about this? How about they bid it as a line item?
We could do an alternate bid.
Yeah, it's just an alternate bid, yeah.
An optional, and then we can go, oh my gosh, it's cheaper to pave Moayak.
Right.
So I'm hearing then, as an alternate, would be a shower, but no water fountain and no portage on.
No, and then let's see what that price comes in at the end.
Okay, we'll proceed, we'll proceed that way.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, spurred something in my mind. I've been going out to Shingle Landing Park and kids, I assume, are going into the mail bathroom, getting paper towels, getting them wet, throwing it up against the ceiling. They've thrown it on the outside of the building and it sticks. So either we take the paper towel dispensers out of the bathroom facilities or put a camera up.
I'd say just get the air dryers, just do a hair dryer.
There's air dryers in there.
Yep, take towels out.
And just take the other ones out.
Yeah.
I'm on the Parks and Rec Board. I'll reach out to Jason Weeks tomorrow.
Okay, I'll talk to him also.
Thank you.
They do it at every one. I mean, Knott's Island, I remember they used to take the picnic tables and just smash them.
I mean, the park is being used tremendously.
It is busy.
And it's a shame to see it degraded like that.
It is after all, like, three months old.
Okay, Mr. McCree?
I have your direction. That's all. Thank you.
That's all you need? Okay, thank you, sir. All right. The next item is going to be under public hearings, Item A, PB 90-07, Pine Island, PUD Phase 5B, Request for amended sketch plan slash special use permit to allow an additional unit of density within Phase 5B by designation, designating a small commercial area within vicinity of the approved cabana. This is a quad례 judicial meeting, so anyone who wishes to speak on this matter, whether it's in comment or testimony, please come forward to get sworn in. And we have some Bibles up there. If you could get one, place your, raise your right hand, place F hand in the Bible. Do you solemnly swear that the evidence presented will be the truth and whole truth?
I do.
You do? Okay, thank you. All right. I guess we're going to start off the presentation with Jeannie Turner. Lieutenant Turner.
Good evening. As the chairman just read, this is an evidentiary hearing, request for amended sketch plan, special use permit for the Pine Island Plan Unit Development. Firstly, I'd just like to remind the board again of some changes that were made to the ordinance earlier this year with respect to the staff and TRC review of special use permits. Earlier at the board retreat, the board directed staff to remove the recommendation from the staff report for these types of hearings and replace that with a staff review and comment. And so you'll notice in your staff report that that's what we have done. Shows up in your staff report under TRC review and comment. Also, you do have evidentiary hearing worksheets at your, on your desk there. The board desires to make the TRC comments conditions of your approval. There is a statement to that effect if you'd like to save time. If the board chooses to do that, if not, then you can craft your language regarding your motion.
Ms. Turner, before you jump into it, have you had this conversation with the applicant about your comments?
The applicant has received all the comments, yes.
Okay.
So the applicant, Turnpike Properties, is requesting amended sketch plan, special use permit approval for the Pine Island Plan Unit Development. And you can see here a zoomed-out aerial photography with the parcel selected. The parcel is just to the south of the Hampton Inn in Corolla, to the north of some of the homes there, one of the phases of Pine Island. And to the west, you can see the Racket Club parcel. I'm going to go ahead and zoom in a little bit tighter so you can see the area there. The airstrip also is adjacent across NC 12 from this parcel. The property is zoned, single-family residential Outer Banks with Plan Unit Development overlay and is subject to the master plan, the sketch plan for Pine Island. The land use plan does classify the site as full service within the Corolla sub-area. So the property is approximately 25 acres. The applicant currently has amended sketch plan, special use permit approval for 23 dwelling, 23-lot subdivision. They also, for that subdivision, have preliminary plat, special use permit approval from the board, as well as construction drawing approval for this 23-lot subdivision. And if you've been in Corolla recently, you probably have seen that they have a lot of that construction of roads and infrastructure completed. The applicant requests to change the amended sketch plan, special use permit for this phase to allow construction of an upper-story dwelling unit over the proposed cabana recreational storage building that was located in open space previously. And how we got to this point and this process, coming back through this process, is the applicant applied for a permit and the permit, the construction drawings did have areas that appear to be a dwelling unit. And in discussion with the applicant, they, their desire to use that building had changed from when the sketch plan first came before the board. And since they do want to establish a unit of density, an additional unit of density, that needs to be amended on the sketch plan because in PUDs, that's approved by this board through this process, the density. So the applicant is requesting this amendment. Another thing with the PUD and the way the ordinance lays out is that upper-story dwelling units need to be, are permitted in areas that are designated commercial on the sketch plan. So the applicant is also designating the area where the proposed cabana, upper-story dwelling unit, and associated site improvements, there is a small area, about .23 acres, of commercial designation on the property. And I've just included that definition of upper-story dwelling, that it's a dwelling unit located on the second floor or higher of a building with non-residential uses located on the first floor. Here you can see the, one of the pages of the amended sketch plan that shows the cabana area being removed from the open space. It's not an allowable use to have a dwelling unit in open space, so that's another reason why this change was required. You can see here, this is one of the pages from the preliminary plat that was approved that shows a little bit more detail, the 23-lot subdivision, as well as this cabana here and the proposed dwelling unit above. And then just zooming down a little bit farther, you can see that there's some more site detail here, parking spaces for the cabana and the access road and things like that. And it's removed from this open space parcel. The area is removed from open spaces, not its own parcel. It still is included in the open space parcel. So again, the land use plan does designate the site as full service within the Corolla sub-area. And there are some, these land use plan policies are in your staff report. They're related to housing and neighborhood development regarding location and density factors, as well as encouraging, the county encouraging, two forms of residential development, open space developments and compact mixed-use developments that may apply to this request. So since this request has, or the subdivision itself has come before this board, these are the comments that were pulled forward from the use permit that was issued to carry forward with this request if approved. Comments one through three were existing comments that the application complies with the review standards of the ordinance, conditions necessary to ensure compliance with the review standards of the ordinance, and to prevent or minimize effects of the development application on surrounding lands include that the subdivision plan will be reviewed when preliminary plat application is submitted. Side setbacks shall be a minimum of 15 feet on the proposed lots. The new comments from TRC for this application are the ownership of the open space parcel shall be in accordance with Section 7.1.3E of the UDO, which is the open space section, and then that the proposed upper-story dwelling unit is proposed on an open space parcel. And that's the reason for that comment. And then comment number five, that the preliminary plat special use permit shall be amended prior to construction of the upper-story dwelling unit. That dwelling unit was not included when the preliminary plat special use permit was So the board's decision can be adoption of a special use permit, adoption with conditions of approval, with consent of the applicant. Any conditions placed need to be, meet or exceed the minimum requirements of the ordinance. Again, the owner or applicant needs to provide written consent to the conditions imposed. And a special use permit may be approved on the finding that the applicant demonstrates the proposed use will not endanger the public health or safety, not injure the value of adjoining lands, be in conformity with the land use plan, and not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. Now this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Jeannie, because it's an open space, does that mean it can't be sold?
It does not mean it can't be sold. And actually, the request is to remove the cabana and its supporting features from the open space designation.
So it will be its own lot?
No, it will be part of the open space parcel. And the applicant can speak to their, how they will decide to own that property, but they don't propose to create a lot out of that. That open space parcel will remain intact with the dwelling unit and the amenity for the subdivision.
Okay.
Any other questions, board? If not, right now, thank you, Ms. Turner, and I'll ask the applicant. Please come forward, please.
Good evening. Commissioners, my name is John Morrison. I represent the developer. I'm with the Twyford Law Firm in Moayak. By way of an opening statement, all that is sought to be done here is, there was a cabana and it had two units, upper and lower. They were to be both for storage. The bottom unit will continue to be for storage. The upper unit will be converted into a two-bedroom apartment. The reason for that is you are familiar with how expensive it is for workers on the Outer Banks to find a decent place to live, or school teachers, or deputy sheriffs, et cetera. This development proposes to have two managers and they are going to house the managers in, on-site, which is much more convenient, in the upper apartment that's to be converted from storage. The appearance of the cabana will not change. The footprint of the cabana will not change. No increase in traffic. We will address adjacent property values. There are no children that will be in this space. The access of emergency vehicles, et cetera, will not change. All that is happening is that the cabana will now not be two storage units, but one storage unit on the bottom floor and the second storage unit will be to house economically folks that will work permanently on this premises. With that, by way of opening statement, I would now like to introduce the developer's agent, Mr. Ralph Blizzard.
Thank you, John.
If you would please give your name to the work...
Ralph Blizzard.
And where do you live, Mr. Blizzard?
Raleigh, North Carolina.
And what is your current position?
Managing Director of Turnpike Properties.
And are you familiar with this particular project?
Very.
Okay. Would you explain why you want this?
Would you explain why you want this change?
Yeah, as you pointed out earlier, this is to house a community slash development manager. That's the only thing we're changing. When we started, we had it as a two-story unit. It's actually in construction right now. The roof is on it. It is permitted already with the condition stores at the top of the building. We're just planning to convert that to a two-bedroom apartment.
All right. Was my statement correct that the appearance and footprint will not change?
That's correct.
And do you have adequate facilities ordered in sewer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is this far from going to be consistent with public facilities, public accommodations?
Yes, sir. Pine Island Currituck Sewer is actually the sewer provider. There are restroom facilities in the building now, so all that doesn't change.
And is there an adjacent property owner?
Yes, there's the Hampton Inn to the north, and then, of course, you know, Turnpike properties, the members of the Slick family own the property to the south.
That's the same as the development.
Yes.
Have you been in personal contact with the Hampton Inn?
I have indeed. We did first a mailing to all the adjacent property owners, like is required in the ordinance. And then I reached out directly to the owner on Friday and secured an email from him saying he does not oppose what we're doing here.
Okay. All right. So were there any other objections?
No, we had a, we went all the way back through the process. We had a community meeting back in June or July, I think. And we had probably a handful of folks that were there, but nobody that was opposed. In fact, we had some folks who were here before, before you, who were there, obviously interested in the meeting here and what's going on, and did not, kind of wondered why we were going through this again, but it's the process.
Okay. I realize there, who could jump through to be here, but the other thing that's happening is you will be able to provide affordable housing for people that work on the premises.
Correct, correct. It's designed to be in support of the community.
All right. I would open this witness to any questions from the board.
Mr. Blizzard, who's going to pay to maintain this? Once it's, once it's done, the HOA, I guess, will?
By the community. I mean, if you remember Pine Island Club, the open, there's open space there, there's a stormwater pond, there's a road that accesses that area. We continue to maintain all that.
Okay. I'm sorry, just one more. And then the parking, is this open parking to anyone, or is it just for your?
No, it's just for the community. Because if you recall, when we met last and went through this, we intend to make it a gated community.
Right, okay.
So will this dwelling be community-owned?
No, it'll be owned by the owner of the property, which, under the UDO, the developer is allowed to own the open space, which is what we've done with Pine Island Club.
So you don't foresee this being sold?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
She kind of answered. We're good.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Blizzard.
Thank you.
All right. Call their appraiser. Could you give us your name, please?
Greg Born.
And where do you live, Mr. Born?
4893 The Woods Road in Kitty Hawk.
And what is your profession?
I am a real estate appraiser.
And are you licensed?
Yes, I am.
And what degrees do you hold?
I have a bachelor's degree in finance from Virginia Tech.
And how many appraisals have you done on the Currituck Outer Banks?
Hundreds over a 35-year period.
And how many appraisals have you done with regard to adverse impacts on adjacent properties?
I have done numerous. The three most recent were actually before this board, and one of them on behalf of Currituck County.
And how many times have you qualified as an expert witness in front of county boards, of commissions, courts, administrative agencies?
Probably a couple dozen at least.
Okay. And have you conducted a study on the potential adverse impact of this property on adjacent properties?
Yes, I have.
Okay. I would tender this witness as an expert in appraisals. Is he so accepted?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. All right. Now, do you have an opinion as to whether or not this would adversely impact adjacent properties?
Yes, I do.
And what is that opinion?
From my research of the data, for both residential and commercial uses, adjacent to amenity packages, I found that there would be no adverse impact to either the adjacent property or any of the surrounding properties due to this change of use.
And how did you come to that opinion?
I researched sales data from properties that are located either adjacent to or nearby to amenities packages to see if there's any price differential between the properties that are right next door and the properties that are situated away from it.
And what determination were you able to make for that comparison?
From that analysis, I found that there is no difference in value for a property that's adjacent to a amenities package versus ones that are situated away from it.
Okay. And this is, in terms of changes, this is pretty minimal, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. So bottom line is, it's the same building, but just it's going to have an apartment for two people upstairs.
That's correct. Looks the same, same footprint. It's the same building, virtual.
And it will not take away from any utility services or any public safety services from the adjacent properties?
It is my understanding it does not.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioners, may I have some questions? I would submit a witness for questions.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If not, thank you, Mr. Born.
All right. Call an engineer, please. You give us your name, please.
Michael Strater Jr.
Mr. Strater, how are you employed?
I'm an engineer with White House.
Okay. What has been your connection with this project from inception to right now?
I have an engineer record for the.
You say you're an engineer. Are you a licensed civil engineer in North Carolina?
Yes, sir.
And have you given expert opinion on engineering and project development before county commissions, courts, and other governmental agencies?
Yes, sir.
All right. I would tender this witness as an expert.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. All right. Now, sir, you're familiar with the proposed change, and you're familiar with the requirements of the Currituck County UDO and the previous approvals. And you're also familiar with the land use plan.
Yes, sir.
All right. Would this change be compliant with the Currituck County land use plan?
Yes, sir, it will be compliant.
Okay. Will this create any additional traffic?
No, sir, it does not generate any addition.
Okay. Will this create any extra demand on, of public services?
No additional for whisper.
Okay. Is it in harmony with the area?
It is.
All right. I would take this witness for questions.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, okay. Thank you, Ms. Strater.
I do have, before we go into public comment, one from Mr. Blizzard. Didn't ask when you got up here. I asked Ms. Turner if she presented the staff. I'm assuming you've read the packet and you're familiar with their requests, and you're okay with those requests should this be granted this evening.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is that all from the applicant? Okay, I'm going to give the staff the opportunity, if they had any questions with the evidence that was presented. None? Okay. If that's the case, then I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on this. And I believe, right now, everyone who signed up had spoken as a witness. I had Michael Strater Jr. Did you wish to speak again? Okay. Next, I had Roth Blizzard. Okay. I had Greg Born. Okay. No one else has signed up. Is there anyone here who did not sign up for the public hearing that was sworn in to like to speak on this? Okay, if not, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this and ask the board if any further discussions or if there are any pro motions.
There's no discussion. Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll move to approve PB 90-07 Pine Island PUD Phase 5B amended sketch plan special use permit because the applicant has demonstrated proposed use meets the review standards of the UDO. The TRC reviewed comments provided in the staff report on page six. I'm going to add those in as a condition of approval as presented this evening. Mr. Attorney, do I need to read those in, or since they're up on the screeners?
I think you referenced in the sufficient.
Okay, thank you, sir. The use will not endanger the public health or safety. The use will not injure the value of adjoining or butting lands, and will be in harmony in the area in which it was created. Three, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan, specifically policy Hotel November 1, policy Hotel November 3, policies CD 8, and policy ES 1. And lastly, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second for Commissioner Owen Etheridge? Do we have any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Last vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next, does the board require a five-minute break, or we want to keep moving on?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a five-minute recess before we go to the next item. Come back at five minutes. Moving this meeting, and the next item that we have is Item B, PB 87-56 Monterey Shores PUD Parcel 10, request for amended sketch plan special use permit to add 36 residential dwelling units, reduce open space by 4.01 acres, and reallocate existing commercial designation on Parcel 10. Again, this is another quasi-judicial meeting, so anyone who wishes to speak or provide evidence on this, please come forward. And we should have plenty of bibles up here. If you could place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Got everybody up here? Okay, do you solemn swear to tell the truth, and the evidence you present today will be the truth, the whole truth, not but the truth? So hope you got it.
I do.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. I believe we have Ms. Turner on this one again.
Thank you again. Again, this is an evidentiary hearing for requested amended sketch plan special use permit for Monterey Shores Plan Unit Development. Again, you should have the evidentiary hearing worksheet at your station there. And again, if the board decides to, or desires to make any TRC comments, conditions of approval, there's a statement of that effect on the worksheet. Subject parcel is approximately 36 acres, and is located adjacent to Malia Drive, behind the Corolla Adventure Goth and bumper cars to the west of that. Seaside Farm Market is here. Obviously, the Currituck Sound out this way. And then, across NC 12 is Monterey Plaza and other commercial shops in Corolla. The parcel is zoned SFO, single-family residential with PUD overlay, and is subject to the Monterey Shores Plan Unit Development amended sketch plan. And that sketch plan designates 34.986 acres of the parcel as open space currently, and 1.208 acres as commercial, and no units of residential density are currently allocated to this parcel. And the property consists of approximately 8.24 acres of upland area excluding the pond. And the Monterey Shores amended sketch plan identifies the open space area of this parcel as utility open space, and you may have noticed this in your staff report, that the North Carolina General Assembly repealed the requirement for reserved green area related to coastal waste treatment disposal on May of last year. And Carolina Water Service, who operates the Monterey Shores Waste Water Treatment Plant, has provided a letter stating that the property proposed, this property that's proposed for development is not needed for utility use. So it does appear that the need for the utility open space appears to be resolved. However, keep in mind, this request does include a reduction in the total open space for Monterey Shores Plan Unit Development. You may recall seeing a land use plan amendment related to this parcel at your prior meeting on October 4th. Here's the land use plan, future land use map. In the 2006 land use plan, it designates a majority of the site as conservation with a small portion as full service. The board did recommend and adopt an approval to the future land use map at the October 4th meeting. That will be sent to the state for certification prior to becoming effective, to the Division of Coastal Management for that process to be completed and effective. You will notice in your packet regarding the community meeting that there were some questions about the land use plan amendment and processes. This is a little bit unique in that it's not a rezoning application, a legislative decision where the board could have made a finding or amended the land use plan through a rezoning action. It's a special use permit quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing, meaning that the board needs to make findings of fact that the project is consistent with the land use plan, and staff felt in order to do that, that the full service designation is required for this The request and amendments to the amended sketch plan also provide corrections to some prior approved sketch plans for Monterey Shores that shows existing approvals more accurately on the sketch plan with respect to the total land area within the PUD, residential density, open space, and commercial allocations. And updates were provided upon the request of staff due to some inconsistencies found in prior approved plans, including the omission of 57 dwelling units at Villas at Corolla Bay. So this plan will have a more accurately reflect the density associated with the PUD. Mr. Bissell did a lot of deep research and spent a lot of time in getting that information together and updating the plan. So we feel like we have a better handle on that at this point with this request. So this request does propose an additional 36 units of density on the parcel, a reduction in the open space area for the PUD on the parcel by 4.01 acres, and relocating existing commercial allocation, not new commercial, but existing commercial, on 1.28 acres within the tract. And you can see how they do that, how they're proposing to do that on some of the plans that I'll show you in just a moment. One other comment on the amended sketch plan, and I did speak with Mr. Bissell prior to the meeting. Generally, the PUD overview, and you'll see in a minute when I show you, has a summary of uses as well as an illustration of where those uses are. So in this sketch plan, there's the data, but it doesn't show like a hatched open space, so it's not easy to see where those areas are. And I've asked if he would be willing to update that, and he has agreed to that. So there's an additional comment for the TRC recommendation, and I'll give that to you later when I get to the TRC comments. So the proposed development is, those 36 units of residential density are in the form of five single-family lots, 25 townhome lots, and six upper-story dwelling units. There's also proposal for a restaurant, outdoor entertainment venue, three retail buildings over the pond. Those are where the upper-story dwellings are proposed. And a ten-slip boat basin is proposed for use by residents and visitors to the site. Here's that sketch plan that I was talking about, and you can see that, well, you may not be able to see, it's kind of small, but it is in your packet. It's probably small there, too. But the data with respect to the total area, open space area, commercial area, Kamau Wetlands is updated in this chart here, and that, the comment is just to have that reflected in the map itself. So here's a summary of the proposed changes that are requested. 36 additional residential dwelling units. Thirty-six additional residential dwelling units will bring the residential density to two point three nine five acres, and then a reduction of four point zero one acres of open space, which still complies with the minimum required open space of thirty-five percent. You can see there at the bottom here, they're proposing thirty-six point six seven percent open space. And with respect to this density number, the maximum allowable density in the PUD is three units per acre. Here's a zoomed-out view of the site where you can see the proposed boat basin and the sound. Any subdivision of the property is going to require preliminary plat special use permit approval for review by this board. Any of the outdoor recreation or entertainment uses also requires special use permit approval. That's a requirement of the ordinance with respect to PUDs, of those types of uses and PUDs. The existing pond is proposed to be expanded for stormwater management. And you may have noticed that the county does, or you may know that the county has a perpetual right in easement to convey and discharge groundwater associated with the Whalehead Watershed Improvement District into the pond and for a subsurface conveyance pipe. And it's of great interest to the county that we ensure that the easements and the purpose for those easements are not negatively impacted by any development or augmentation of the existing pond. The applicant is proposing access on Malia Drive here, as well as an entrance, you can see here, through the DOT-owned property where Seaside Farm Market is currently located. We'll note that approval for that access from DOT has not been provided by the applicant. No official comments from NC DOT have been received by staff for this access here.
Jenny, how does that affect tonight, then? If he, the applicant doesn't have permission to actually use that area, is that? So I know Seaside Farm Market, they use it as a parking lot now, that's kind of where their traffic stop-in area is, obviously, but does that affect the application tonight in any way, shape, or form, or potentially in the future, I guess?
It may affect the application, that the applicant will need to provide the board with the information that you need to make the finding for this special use permit.
So, kind of to just elaborate on Bob's point, we don't have permission yet from DOT to use the, I would say, the main entrance way for the commercial. We're waiting on the state to approve what we did last board meeting on the change to the land use plan or to the future land use plan. It seems like we're rushing it without all the information. Yeah, I mean, so... I don't know. It just seems like we don't have...
Trust the, Mr. Bissell has lots of information for us.
Yeah, let's finish staff first, and then we'll bring you up, so.
To the access questions, I will note that the ordinance requires a minimum of one access for the project as proposed, but the applicant is proposing access through this parcel here. And that has, to my knowledge, that we have not received any information regarding approvals of how that would work, anything official from DOT or Turnpike Authority, who owns that parcel. I did go through the proposal. I just want to highlight, you can see here, these are the proposed townhouse lots, an amenity, a pool amenity for that, some parking for those lots. Then there's the single-family dwelling lots, there's five of those here, the proposed restaurant, and entertainment deck area. And then here are the three non-residential buildings with the two upper-story dwelling units above each building, and a proposed access and parking here.
Ms. Turner, while you're talking about residential, I was looking at this, I don't see any mailboxes, basically, or cluster mailboxes, they're not, we don't deal with, develop as much on Corolla, so is that not a requirement?
Cluster mailboxes will likely be required. This is a sketch plan, it's not, it's not, there's no specific site development review at this point. I'm not sure if that's something that was even addressed by the building inspector. Generally, at this point, the building inspector will give a list of certain items to be aware of.
We just seem to see it normally in our stuff, it's kind of at this, you know, you've really laid out the kind of the meat and potatoes, and so, anyway, just something that jumped out at me, because we're short of mailboxes everywhere in Corolla currently.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So to kind of pony off of Commissioner Jarvis, the three upper-dwelling, that side wing off to the right, that entrance looks like it is to the NC DOT road.
That's proposed, that's how they're proposing that entrance.
Okay, so that piece of the project has no access to 12 now?
Right.
Correct?
Well, yeah, DOT hasn't gotten given permission to use that, is what you're saying.
I mean, I get it. The townhouses and the dwelling units have access out the other way, but that section is not.
You haven't received anything from DOT yet?
Haven't received anything from the applicant or from DOT, no.
And Jenny, how long does it usually take to get a response back from the state on what was submitted?
From DOT or from?
No, no, on the...
Oh, on the DCM, on the change to land use?
Yes, 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 yes.
The prior amendments, it's been from when it was approved by the board to when it was certified, it was three or four months?
Easy, okay.
I think she said something very important, that this is sketch plan.
This is the concept.
There's nothing set in stone about this. That'll come with preliminary plat.
Now, this is the, this is an area, use area map where you can see where they're proposing. The green is the commercial area. One of the requests is to take the one point two eight acres of commercial and move it around on the site, so you can see the green is the commercial area for the retail, upper-story dwelling units, paddleboat rentals here, I don't know that I mentioned that earlier, and then for the restaurant. The pink is what they're calling active open space, that'll be evaluated through the preliminary plat special use permit process and major site plan, depending on how they propose to phase the project. And the yellow here, I think I already mentioned, is residential areas. So as I mentioned earlier, the land use plan amendment, our map was amended or adopted by this board, still needs to be certified by DCM and the state. With respect to the land use plan, there are multiple policies in your staff report that may apply to this project, including these two regarding housing and neighborhood, the housing and neighborhood policies of the ordinance. I won't read those out to you, but there's those policies. Then there are commercial development policies that may apply with respect to mixed-use developments and coordinating site designs with nearby businesses. There are special policies applicable to the outer banks regarding infrastructure and services, as well as minimizing commercial strip development. There are policies to conserve environmentally sensitive areas regarding development with suitable soils, adequate infrastructure, protecting wetlands. And then there are public access policies regarding the county supporting establishment of additional public and private accesses and many forms of access to the water. The TRC review comments here are, one, that the land use plan amendment approved by the board on October 4th be certified by the state prior to this special use permit becoming valid. Two, a site-specific development plan is not approved for this property. Approvals for any proposed development on the tract must be submitted to the county, follow the appropriate review process for the type of use proposed, and be approved by the appropriate authority. For Section 1.8.6b 2 of the ordinance, special use permits for outdoor recreation, entertainment uses, including the ten-slip boat basin, paddleboat rentals, outdoor entertainment venue are required in PUDs. This amended sketch plan special use permit request may result in relocation of permissible commercial development area. However, to establish outdoor recreation, entertainment uses, additional special use permit applications will be required. Four, that major site plan and or preliminary plat special use permit approval, as applicable, is required prior to commencement of development. Five, that multifamily design standards, non-residential design standards, or shopping center design standards, apply to development as applicable per the UDO. Six, a proposed accessing configuration through the DOT-owned parcel shall be approved by NC DOT or Turnpike Authority as appropriate and by county staff through preliminary plat special use permit or major site plan review process. Seven, that proposed changes to the pond configuration shall not negatively impact the county's easement or purpose for the easement recorded in the Register of Deeds Office, Deed Book 1135, page 302. And a note shall be added to the plans to reflect the county's perpetual right in easement to convey and discharge groundwater associated with the Whalehead Watershed Improvement District into the pond shown, and more particularly described on that plat recorded at Plat Cabinet K, Slide 50 of the Currituck County Registry. Eight, that walkways and piers for private property owner use may not be constructed in open space set-asides. And nine, that required open space areas, including active open space, will be evaluated during review of subsequent applicant submissions. And then I have added that additional comment that I mentioned before regarding the amending the sketch plan, that the PUD overview and summary of uses shall be updated to clearly illustrate open space areas and commercial areas consistent with the area summary provided. And again, these are the decisions that the board can make in reviewing special use permit application. And special use, the board may attach conditions of approval, provided any conditions of approval meet or exceed the minimum requirements of the ordinance. The owner and the applicant shall provide written consent to conditions imposed by this board. And a special use permit shall be provided, approved on a finding that the applicant demonstrates that the proposed use will meet those four findings, those four review standards. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the board? If not, thank you, Ms. Turner. Yes, sir.
Thank you for your presentation. Commissioner Owen Etheridge, this is entitled preliminary sketch plan.
Amended sketch plan, special use permit.
Could you come forward, please, to the mic, so, yes, we can make sure we're recording everything? Thank you.
The concern about the road and the permission from DOT and the other issues that you raised, if this board was to approve what is requested by the developer tonight, that doesn't waive those matters being addressed at a later hearing. This is not giving them permission to go forward with construction tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, the applicant has come forward and...
Give us your name, please.
Mark Bissell.
And Mr. Bissell, how are you employed?
Employed by Bissell Professional Group as a civil engineer.
And are you a licensed civil engineer in North Carolina?
I am.
And where did you take your degree?
Dick University.
I'm sorry you didn't get to go to college.
Hey, I honored your alma mater tonight, look at this.
Now, Mr. Bissell, how long have you been, you're a licensed civil engineer, is that correct?
I am, yeah.
And how long have you been practicing engineering?
Been practicing engineering under that license since 1982, and locally here since 1984.
And have you ever been sanctioned by your professional association?
I had a minor infraction once upon a time.
How long ago was that?
Fifteen years ago.
All right. You're in good standing.
I am in good standing.
Okay. Now, you are familiar with this plan, is that correct?
I am.
And you are the developer of this plan?
That's correct.
Okay. And have you testified as an expert witness on civil engineering and site plan development?
I have many, many times.
Including in front of this board?
Yes.
And are you familiar with Currituck County UDO?
I'm very familiar with it.
And are you familiar with the land use plan as was amended at the last meeting?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Now, would you explain to the board the plan, and I would tell the board there are some things he is not confident, testified by, and I will supplement with subsequent expert witnesses, such as a traffic engineer, the impact, potential impact, adverse effect on adjacent properties, stormwater runoff, sediment control, and what. Proceed, Mr. Bissell.
And I think we have some slides here, there we go. Well, this is an overview of the project site, and you actually saw that as part of Jenny's presentation, but what I wanted to do is to just kind of point out the boat basin and the docks and the elevated walkways across the wetlands and then across the shallow waters. These actually get to where we have deeper water that's been mapped out there. What you're looking at here is a four-foot elevation contour, which is why the basin is situated where it is with the dock. This also shows the future connection to Malia Drive over here to try to assist with the traffic congestion in this area. And then this also shows this huge undisturbed wetland buffer that will be, that will remain intact. So what we're looking at here, then, is the, we're kind of focusing on the more detailed part of the development plan. This is looking at the upland area and how that is proposed to be developed. Right now, there is a, about a one point two acre commercial area that's already been established right in this area. And what this plan does is relocate that over to here where it's, it really makes more sense over here right behind Ten Buck Two, and then out here where you can actually have something with a sound view that makes sense. And the rest of this would be residential. So we're proposing a restaurant and outdoor entertainment venue, some small commercial development here with some upper-story dwelling units that are really intended for employee housing, which, as you know, there's a great shortage of. We're proposing a paddleboat operation here in this location, and then, of course, the sound access and these, so we're providing some recreational opportunities that are needed here.
Hi, Mr. Bissell, I think there's some confusion, there's no marina being constructed, is that correct?
That's correct.
And these are boat slips that service owners of, renters of facilities.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
And we would hope that, you know, maybe somebody could come across from the mainland and dock here and grab a bite to eat and then go back.
And this will be, this will be the only restaurant on the Currituck side, is that correct?
It's the only one I'm aware of that has the canvas available.
Mr. Bissell, before you jump too far, one of the comments that was raised in your public meeting was about the prospect of an outdoor venue, I guess. And the way that it looks like it's oriented, I'm assuming that with a restaurant, that there's going to be deck seating to the westward side of that restaurant, southwest, so your noise, your noise is going to be directed out towards the sound rather than back towards residential areas? Is that how the initial concept is laid out there?
It is. Certainly better than, way better than it would be if it were the existing... Certainly better than, way better than it would be if it were the existing commercial allocation as now.
Can I ask a question before you move on?
Sure.
If you'll go back to that one. Can you point out where parking? You've got this venue, you've got paddleboat rentals, you've got the commercial space. Where, and you've got townhomes that, and I realize this is a preliminary sketch, but where is the parking that will be needed for these locations? How much parking is going to be available?
Well, if you look at, for the restaurant and entertainment venue, you can see some of the parking here, but what you're not seeing is that this is an elevated deck and this entire area is parking underneath.
So it's similar to Ten Buck 2?
It's similar to Ten Buck 2 in that regard. The outdoor venue is actually similar to Blue Point's outdoor venue in terms of their, their...
And on the other entrance?
And then over here, you've got this, this entire strip of land here is parking that's set up for, for these units here. And then as far as the, the townhomes, of course, they have, are intended to have garages and driveways, but then there's also visitor parking here, and then there's community parking here where we have this outdoor recreation facility proposed.
Okay.
If I'm looking at it, it looks like you have right at, or a little over 100, kind of public parking spaces between the various mixes. The restaurant, for instance, there's 60-some there, there's 30-some behind the lakefront.
The number is on this chart, but I can't read it. I'm going to have to find out.
Right. That's your fault, Mark.
That's the problem for me.
Hundred and eight?
Hundred and eight. There you go. Ms. Turner says it was 108 proposed spaces.
Question, follow-up on what Bob brought up. What is the approximate distance from the entertainment venue to the nearest residential off-site of the development?
Well, the nearest residential would be over, it's off the site here, over here is, you've got the Monterey Pines condominiums that are located in this area beyond the wastewater treatment plant, which is located in here. And then up here, you've got, the nearest single family is, is up in here. So I'd say this distance right here is 200 feet. So my guess is that is...
That's a lot. And that's wooded currently.
And it is wooded.
But it, yeah, it is. It has mature, mature growth on it.
It has remained that way. So look at that, very, very good sound buffering there.
Thank you.
I'd like to kind of run through the before criteria for the, to the rest of the use permit criteria. First, it will not endanger the public health or safety. The streets will be looped and able to accommodate the traffic, and we do have a traffic engineer with us to further comment on that as needed. The seaside traffic, market traffic pattern will be improved. We know it's kind of chaotic there right now, and we have a plan for that, which I'll address on the next slide. We will be making pedestrian connections to enhance pedestrian connectivity, and that'll be at both Albacore and at Malia Drive. And we are accommodating emergency vehicles. We do have public water supply, fire protection needs addressed, stormwater management is being addressed. If you look back here at this, we have a four-acre existing water feature here. This is much, much larger than a water feature that we would typically design for a development this size. So it's really ideal for managing stormwater and filtering out, settling out particulates before they leave the site.
I may, before you leave the pond, what is the acreage of the pond, you said?
About four acres.
And the county has recorded easement to that pond?
The county does.
And so the developer could not violate that easement agreement, it's recorded easement, it's developer's mind.
Exactly.
And that's, that is not the only easement. That's not, that's the county, Monterey Plaza, the Stan White Building, there's a whole bunch of other things that tie into this pond as well, do you know? So you've got Monterey Plaza, you've got...
Right, there's a stormwater...
Yeah. All there, that pond handles a lot of stormwater for, in addition to the county's needs for Whalehead, it also handles Monterey, Stan White Building, Obi Gas, and some of the old BDNA building over there flows as well.
And as we get to the next stage of development, we'll be actually modeling the stormwater and making sure that we're able to accommodate the need of this development while we're still accommodating all those other needs.
Okay. Thank you.
And wastewater treatment is being provided by Carolina Water Service, and they have indicated that you have capacity to serve this development. I wanted to talk a little bit about the seaside market. We've done a sketch on top of the existing approved plan that was approved 20-some years ago, before the seaside market went into existence. It's located here. And what you see here is the parking and a turnaround that were approved along with that. But what you actually see on the ground has parking that really hasn't been defined. You can't, the drive aisle is not really defined, the, there's no real defined place for loading and unloading of merchandise and so forth, so, you know. We know that there's concern about it, and so we think we can actually improve that situation by delineating the parking spaces, by providing places where trucks can actually turn around, where they can stop and unload, by delineating the parking spaces, by paving and delineating this drive aisle, and, and even more importantly, by connecting it to Malia Drive, so that there is just not everybody trying to get in and out at the same time. We can actually provide a traffic flow that we think will be a huge benefit and improvement over that current situation. So, you know, looking at it on the overall plan, you've got this parking area here, but then if we can actually provide a way that people and trucks and so forth can connect back to Malia and another way to get back onto Route 12, you should see a significant And with regard to NC DOT, as was mentioned, this is only a sketch plan, we still need to go through this entire process again and get another special use permit, actually four additional special use permits, I believe, for the four different categories of this development. And those will, and that will be the same process, but with a more detailed plan and actual permits in hand. But, you know, we do have a right-of-way here that was recorded as a right-of-way. It was acquired with public right-of-way funds and without restriction of access to Monterey Shore's property. And we've had a number of discussions with DOT, and they have expressed no objection to this plan, and they've also indicated that they will amend the agreement that's currently in place with seaside to accommodate this additional access. So it's just a matter of working through the final plan details and getting, obtaining an actual permit, which we will come back with at the next stage. As far as the lands not injuring the value of adjoining or abutting lands and being in harmony with the area, the adjacent uses of the property each are already commercial. Let's go back to the plan again. You have the, you have commercial developments on the south side, on the east side, across the street is Monterey Plaza. Over here, you have the multifamily where Monterey Pines is, and then here you have the wastewater treatment plant, so certainly not, shouldn't be adversely impacting anybody from a land use standpoint. Property's been part of the PUD since 1988, joins the commercial, part of the Buck Island PUD. This is really a mixed-use hub that, and this is consistent with the applicable policies of the land use plan. So we don't anticipate any adverse impact, and we do have, of course, an appraiser that will provide expert testimony on, on those issues. We have, in many ways, this project is in harmony with the land use plan. The Coral Subarea, as Jenny stated, says is predominantly intended for medium density in the Coral Subarea, two to three units per acre. We're at 1.3, and overall density of no more than three for the PUD. This raises it slightly to 2.395, still well below that standard. Some of the other policy consistencies for the preservation of non-coastal wetlands, and wetlands are being conserved with this plan. This is just showing the land that was, that you all acted on last time to make this a full-service designation, so instead of CAMA agrees to that, which, you know, we understand that they have never, we're not aware of one that has ever been disagreed with. It's just going through the process, and I think there's something in your, in your package of that effect.
Yes. I may, on that point, you have correspondence, please, from CAMA saying they're not familiar with our, not approving a amended land use plan, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And it's consistent with the intended future land use plan for managing Currituck. Policy PA1, establishing additional public and private access opportunities to the water of Currituck Sound. We are doing exactly that. Policy OB1, providing infrastructure and services adequate to meet the basic quality of life and public health and safety requirements to the residents, and we are doing that as well. Policy ES4, in improving new developments, creating vegetated buffer shorelines along the estuary shorelines. We're doing, providing not only a vegetative buffer, but we're providing anywhere from 200 to several hundred feet of additional wetland buffer that will remain undisturbed to the sound. Policy HN1, encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for the location. And we've already kind of been over the Coral Subarea and the PUD requirements, which we fall well under. Policy HN3, Currituck County Shout, encourage two forms of residential development, which are open space developments, to cluster homes on land, preserving permanently dedicated open space, and compact mixed-use developments near a mixture of uses that promote a return to balance self-supporting community centers, generally served by centralized water and sewer. And this development satisfies both of those development policies. Will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. We don't anticipate any impacts on the school system. Pedestrian connectivity will tie into the county's long-range plan. No adverse impacts anticipated to the fire and rescue or law enforcement, we have heard no objections to those. Will be providing appropriate and adequate fire protection. The design will accommodate emergency vehicles. Existing utilities do have the capacity to serve the site. We have addressed environmental concerns through buffers and through adequate stormwater management facilities. Public health, safety, and welfare can be advanced through careful planning and design. We believe that all these criteria necessary for the issuance of a special use permit have been more than adequately addressed, and we would like to ask for your approval. This is just an architect's preliminary rendering of what the site might look like after the development is done. So approval of the sketch plan amendment, and again, remember, this is just a sketch plan, will result in a well-planned site with several needed facilities for this area that will be compatible with and will complement the adjacent nearby land uses. And so we would ask for a conditional approval that this could be approved, subject to the Coastal Resources Commission agreeing with the appropriateness of the land use plan amendment that this board adopted at the last meeting.
I may ask a couple more questions. Mr. Bissel has mentioned, I would draw it for this is preliminary amended, preliminary plat approval. So if you go forward to the board's grant permission tonight, and you don't get the CAMA approval, and you don't, so it's going to get straight with DOT, you understand the ball game's over?
We won't be back without those approvals.
Okay. All right. And you understand this board's not waiving the right to waive those objections in a later proceeding?
We certainly do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bissel?
Yep. Just to, just to make sure, to get you on record, Ms. Turner presented a number of things tonight from staff, and just want to make sure that you were comfortable with those if they get read in tonight as part of this. Okay. Thank you.
And staff has been really good to work with on this thing, because there were a number of problems that we had to work through, and we spent really hours and hours figuring it all out, going back through 33 years, I think it is, history on this Friday, and giving it all up to date.
Any other questions for Mr. Bissel? None, thank you, Mr. Bissel.
Would you give us your name, please?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephen Cratt.
And Mr. Crattick, how are you employed?
I'm employed by Appraisers NCU Incorporated, a real estate appraisal firm in Grand...
How long have you been involved in real estate appraisal?
Almost 20 years.
And how much of that has been in and around northeastern North Carolina, Currituck County in particular?
All of it has been in northeast North Carolina.
At my request, you have prepared a curriculum vitae, have you not?
Yes, sir.
And is this a curriculum vitae?
It is.
I'd ask permission to publish this report. Now, sir, have you testified as an expert witness on real estate appraisal in front of boards of commission and courts and other administrative?
I have many times.
Many times you've been qualified as an expert?
I have.
Have you been qualified as an expert in determining whether a project will have an adverse impact on the value of adjacent property?
I have.
All right. And are you familiar with this project?
I am.
And have you, at the developer's request, done a study as to whether or not this proposed project would have an adverse impact on adjacent properties?
I have.
And have you reached an opinion?
I have.
And what is that opinion?
My opinion is that this project will not injure the property values of adjacent or abutting properties, and it will be in harmony in which the area is located.
And you have also prepared a report as to how you came to that conclusion? Is this a report?
It is.
I would request permission to publish this report as well.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a statement.
Thank you. Yes.
Now, tell the board what procedure you used as determining the impact. Now, fill the board what procedure you used as determining the impact of this on property, this property on adjacent properties.
What I'll do is I'll kind of go through the, the report that you had in front of you, and just to reiterate, I was hired by the applicant to study and determine the possible effects, if any, that may occur from this proposed development. Just to give you some background about market values in Corrala itself. First up, county's peak of the local real estate market pricing occurred in January 2006, apologize, July 2006. At that time, the values of properties throughout the county began a gentle decline until 2008, when locally and nationally, we experienced what economists called the Great Recession. This is when property values hit all-time lows and foreclosures became the norm across the U.S. According to the U.S. Bureau of Economic Research, this recession started in December 2007 and ran until June 2009. We felt these negative effects of this Great Recession locally, both during and long after its so-called ending in 2010. Property values here in Currituck County began to increase gently in 2010 and have remained in an upward trend since then. And obviously, Corrala and Corrova areas were hit the hardest economically of any area within our county. Some current market trends you'll be interested in. In Corrala, supply and demand are not in balance. In appraising, we call this a undersupply. This means that there's a greater demand for properties than there is of the supply of properties available. Since COVID-19 became a norm throughout the country, vacationers are continuing to come to our area now instead of having a traditional vacation in the summer. Employees of vacationers are using more virtual technology to have meetings and to work rather than having employees come to a physical place of business. This is allowing more flexibility for vacationers to travel with family and be able to vacation and work on the go. I really see that this trend is going to continue for quite a long time in the future. And remember that our vacationers that come now are our future homeowners. According to the Outer Banks Association of Realtors, multiple listing service, the median home sales prices within Corrala zip code have gently increased over the last 10 years cumulatively, but have increased more significantly over the last year or so. This continuing increase has been caused by the increased demand for homes of all kinds in the Corrala area, the decreased number of foreclosures available for sale in Corrala, and more recent positive national economic and banking factors. If we use 2005's year-end statistics as the beginning reference point, we have the following statistical evidence to present to you. The median sales price in Corrala at the end of 2005, just before the peak occurred, was $830,000 with 267 home sales. And four years later, the median sales price in Corrala in 2009, at the bottom end of the market, was $526,125 with 110 home sales. That was a severe drop in values. The median sales price in Corrala last year in 2020 was $601,000 with 493 home sales. This is an increase in home values and a huge increase in the number of sales in the last 10 years since 2009. And currently in 2021, the median sales price in Corrala is $720,000 with 427 home sales to date. This is an increase in home values and a huge increase in the median sales price over the last year since December 2020. That is an average of about 41 sales per month that's occurring in Corrala, and a one-year sales price increase of 19.8%. That's a huge jump. The 2021 sales statistic is a very strong indicator of the stability of the real estate market currently in Corrala. These numbers provide undisputable evidence that demand for residential is not going away, but it is still increasing. Sales prices now are at a similar level as what they were in around 2004, and home prices in Corrala are still recovering. It also shows that the median home sales price is going up, leading one to believe that Corrala sales market is well on its way to a full recovery. I do not foresee that this current positive trend will be changing soon. And a fact that proves that this trend is continuing is that currently, there are 184 properties that are on the market or under contract in Corrala now. That is almost five more months of possible sales inventory at the current rate of sales per month just in Corrala. The subject property. I physically inspected the subject property on Thursday, 10/14/2021, and the property's adjoining and abutting the subject property, and I have viewed the surrounding neighborhood areas as well, both commercial and residential. What I have found during this process is that currently, the subject property is not at its highest and best use. If you approve the proposed 36 residential units and the reallocation of the commercial designation on the existing site, it will improve the subject property's highest and best use, and it will increase its potential utility. It is a fact that the applicant could increase the subject's property density even more than they're requesting, but that does not appear to be what the applicant intends to do. It would be more probable and more profitable to do that, but they're not attempting to do that. The plans that the applicant and engineer have submitted show that the structures they propose to build are similar to the structures on nearby properties and similar to the structures in the immediate and nearby neighborhoods. Although this proposal is not an unusual project for the area, as there are already other multi-use projects in use nearby, and projects that have been approved but not yet built, but it is somewhat unusual in the fact that the proposed properties will have some proposed amenities and unique sound and pond views. With the increased demand and need for housing, I have already proven to you, also comes the increased demand for stores, offices, and commercial uses. The applicant's plan, if approved, will help add to that additional business component to this ever-growing landscape of residential and commercial demand. Some of the future benefits for the county would be, if this is approved, you would see an increase in the tax base. Currently, the county has this land tax value of the property at approximately $803,000, which gives the county a total of $3,694 annually in tax income. The applicant is estimating that the total value assessment of the property after it is fully completed would be approximately $18 million, which will give the county $82,800 in annual revenue at the current rate of 46 cents per $100 of value now. Not only will the county receive the real estate property taxes from the property, but it will also benefit from the additional occupancy taxes that will be generated from the property if rentals occur there in the future, and it is likely. Additionally, the county will benefit from the sales and use taxes that will be generated by the businesses that will occupy the commercial portions of the property. And furthermore, nearby businesses will benefit from the additional occupancy from their own sales of gasoline, food, souvenirs, and the like. Approving this project is logical, and it will promote the logical and orderly development of the subject property, which is the true crux of good planning and development. At this time, I see no possible unintended consequences from this approval of the project based on the current and available information known. And in synopsis, based on the, all the evidence that has been presented by the applicant, all the remarks from county staff and the technical review committee, and the in-depth research I personally performed for this particular assignment, I have determined that it is my professional and expert opinion that the addition of the 36 residential dwelling units and the reallocation of the commercial designation on the existing site will not injure the values of adjoining or abutting lands, and it will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. I'll be glad to answer any questions you all have.
Any questions from the board? None, thank you, Mr. Craddock. Yes, sir.
Mr. Craddock, would it also be your professional opinion that not only will this not have an adverse impact on adjacent properties, but has the potential that it will increase the value of adjacent properties?
Yes, that is the potential.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craddock.
All right, so would you give us your name, please?
Andrew Top.
And Mr. Top, how are you employed, sir?
I'm a senior project manager with AHP Engineering.
And where do you live?
Living in Raleigh.
And is that where the business is?
Yes, sir.
And what is your education, please?
I got a bachelor's in civil engineering from Virginia Tech and a master's in civil engineering at NC State.
And you still hold that degree and are licensed as a civil engineer?
Yes, sir.
All right, and what is your specialty within engineering?
I'm a traffic engineer.
Okay, now, do you belong to any professional associations of traffic engineers?
Yes, sir.
And are you, do you hold any special licensures in traffic engineering?
Yes, sir, I'm a professional traffic operations engineer.
Okay, licensed by the state of North Carolina?
Yes.
All right, sir. Now, are you, I would tend to this witness as an expert.
Yes, thank you.
All right, have you examined this project?
Yes, sir.
And do you have an opinion based on your training, education, and experience as to whether or not this project as presented would have an adverse impact on traffic safety, traffic usage in the vicinity?
That's correct. I would not assume that this is, this development would have any adverse effect.
All right, so you do have an opinion?
Yes.
And is it your professional opinion that this will not have an adverse impact on traffic in the area?
That's correct.
All right, and how did you arrive in that determination?
We've begun the process of doing a traffic impact analysis.
Explain to the ladies and gentlemen about the commission.
Sure, sure. So, traffic impact analysis is where we estimate the amount of likely vehicular trips associated with this development through resources approved by NC DOT, Institute of Traffic Engineering Trip Generation Manual, and it's a review by NC DOT to develop the number of peak hour trips associated with this type of development, and then we plug those trips onto the adjacent street network, the intersections closest to this development, to then determine how much delay or increase in what we call level of service or delay that's associated with each intersection, and that can be translated into queues and other types of measures of effectiveness.
All right, and how much time did you spend, excuse me, how much time did you spend on studying the traffic flow and impact in this, in the vicinity of this project?
We've, we did data collection of those intersections, but several, several days worth so far.
All right, I get it. Again, if your opinion is will not cause a traffic safety problem?
That is my opinion.
I tend to witness any questions you have.
So you said you, you've actually been to the site and done a, just count of cars, basically, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we, we.
When did you do that?
We did it right before the Labor Day weekend, so.
Okay, so you were out there when it was heavily trafficked, obviously?
Yes, during the peak season there.
Okay, all right. Thank you, I just want to make sure it wasn't October when they moved.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? None? Okay, thank you, sir.
As witnesses, give us your name, please, sir.
Abel Harmon.
Mr. Harmon, where do you live?
Swan Quarter, North Carolina.
And how are you employed?
I do wetland delineation and consultant work.
And you've worked closely with Corps of Engineers?
Yes.
And how long have you been engaged in such work?
Since 1998.
All right, now, there is no special licensure or degree required for this kind of work, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And there, and there aren't any give, I mean, you, there aren't any that you can get.
All right, so there's no such thing as.
There isn't. The people that work at the Corps don't have a degree either.
Okay.
Or Camma.
Neither does Mr. Vessel. All right, now, how many projects have you worked on in determining wetlands and determining sediment runoff, nutrient runoff, et cetera?
A year?
Ballpark.
Per year, you're talking about?
Sure.
Uh, this year so far, maybe 200.
And you have done similar amounts in years past?
One more.
Okay, all right. Have you examined this particular site?
Yes.
All right, does it meet all Corps of Engineer wetland requirements?
It does.
All right, now, I believe there's been some concern expressed previously before this board as to sediment runoff or nutrients runoff, it could have a damaging effect on the Currituck Sound. Do you have an opinion whether that would happen or not based upon your training and experience?
Not by any causes other than natural.
Okay, so this development would not have an adverse impact on the Currituck Sound?
Correct.
All right, explain how you came to that conclusion.
They have best management practices, really, the state did this, adopted all this back during the Dust Bowl. You know, vegetative borders, sloped ditch banks, things like that. The closest soil disturbance that would take place in this project to the water is over 200 feet away. So in eastern North Carolina, being our elevation is extremely flat, not, and going through 200 feet of grass, runoff is virtually impossible.
Okay. Now, that would be for both sediment and for nutrients, like fertilizer?
Correct.
And another fertilizer will be used on this would be on grass, is that right?
Yeah, I'm guessing somewhere around 50 pounds a year for the whole project?
Now, you and I had a conversation earlier this afternoon, which was very interesting to me. What affects the growth of seaweed, excuse me, seagrass and other vegetation under the water is turbidity more so than nutrients?
Yes.
Or sedimentation?
Correct.
Explain to the commission what turbidity is.
And this is a kind of a catch-22 with it. So when the sunlight has to get to the bottom for the grass to grow, and then when the grass dies and is gone, then the, the water, the wave action stirs the water up, which makes it cloudier, which kills more grass, which means, and the grass is what holds the bottom to keep it from getting stirred up. So it's just kind of an ongoing cycle, it's really hard to break. Shoreline erosion also is putting sediments in the water that's all stirred up, and when the sun can't get to the bottom, then the grass doesn't grow. The other thing is it buries the grass that is there, or oysters, or clams, or whatever you have on the bottom that's helping hold all this from eroding, is getting, you know, it's just, it's an ongoing cycle like that. So keeping your shoreline stable is like.
Paramount.
All right, and there's nothing in this project, in your opinion, that would destabilize the shoreline because it's 200 feet away, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that 200 feet, the grass, the runoff would have to go through, the grass serves as a filter to block it, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The best filter.
Best filter.
Better than anything man-made.
All right. Okay.
Let's see.
All right, I would, I would tender this witness to the commission.
Yes, thank you. Any, any questions from the board? Mr. Harmon? Okay, none, no, thank you, Mr. Harmon. Okay, and I guess I'll give this opportunity to staff if they had any questions of any of the witnesses presented? None? Okay, thank you. Well, then, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and we have two people signed up. And if I could ask you to come forward, state your name and address for the record, the first person I have signed up is Thomas Wright.
My name's Thomas, sorry. I work for the Cotton Gin. I'm an adjacent property owner to the DOT right away. And been a busy summer, and I wasn't able to get to some of the planning board processes, just not enough people to work, and anyway, slowed down some, so kind of more apparent this is out of our backdoor control, so. I really don't know what to say. Citizen of Currituck, we bought the property over there, I know they were twenty years ago. I don't come up here much, so. I hadn't seen all these experts, the traffic engineer that went to my alma mater. I don't know what to say, I just, I mean, I want the folks to be able to get something done over there, but it's just so overwhelming, the traffic problem on that corner. And he's an expert, I don't know what I am, but he's an expert and there's no traffic problem. So, I don't know really what to say, maybe I just need to sit down. And, you know, because there's a real problem on that corner with the traffic. I understand Mark, you know, saying maybe they can bring some order to the traffic. You know, we've been in the shopping center a long, long time, there's no, on busy days, there's no place to park. If somebody has egress, if we can all leave and go through Mr., whose properties it is, you know, Mr. Bussel's or whoever he's helping, we can all leave through that way, maybe it'll help it. But, you know, it's just a very, that particular driveway is just, you know, I don't know, I don't know what he was saying. Anyway, I, you know, I'd be glad to talk to y'all individually about it over there. You know, the whole process with DOT and the right of way and the bridge, originally when we went there, the bridge is coming there. The whole area over there so badly needs some way to have another access and egress by on the bridge. And I tried to contact DOT and I think late this afternoon I had a message on my phone, and I tried to get back up, and I couldn't. Anyway, into right of way division or to see if I could talk to somebody to help me understand how DOT bought the property for possible egress or exit of the bridge, they're working further north for a bridge that's, they don't have that solved. And they're possibly going to grant these people an access where, is it possible in the future the bridge may have to be changed or till something is, becomes concrete? I'm confused, but DOT is now over a million dollars there on the property. So, we could possibly get some way to get back and forth to the out of banks. I know that they're looking in another area, but till it's all put, you know, how can they, how can even DOT act on this till they know what's going on with the project? And I don't want to hinder Mr. Bussel's, what he's trying to do. I mean, I think more development, commercially, great. I just know, I'm just here trying to make people aware of the traffic situation there. I feel awkward because that's what just got up here and said there's no traffic problem. So, I don't know what to say, and then, you know, we've got established business there for twenty years. I know there's a traffic problem and it's very bad there. And it's not just the chaos that the unmarked traffic is there, the market, it's, we, the shopping center, we pay a lease for parking there in the DOT right of way now, fully has a lease with the folks at DOT, and these people now want to right of way through there. I guess, I don't want to hinder somebody, so I guess it would just help us, maybe somebody could explain to me how traffic's going to really get better.
Well, right now, DOT has not provided any information whether they're going to allow them to use that or not. We're still waiting for a response from DOT, so they may come back and say no. And then that could, like it was test, brought up earlier, that if that happens, then it could just.
They may say yes, you know, I don't know how to make the decisions myself, but even if they did say yes, I'm just here, I don't, again, I don't want to hinder Mr. Morrison or Mr. Bussel, but, or the people who own the property. I'm just saying, we need help to try to do something to the corner. And in a major way, not some, I mean, I say they're going to have a hundred spaces over there, I don't know what, I wish I knew better to help y'all. How many spaces are in the parking center, the shopping center?
Not enough.
Not enough, they're going to add it, and if we can all just exit through Mr. Bussel, maybe that can understand how that would help. But if there's a hundred spaces over there and they're going to come, what I say is they come there, I mean, you know, if you're in business, you want traffic. It's just, I'm just here to, I don't want to harm anybody, I'm just here to say that. When they come to that corner, they're leaving the shopping center and they're leaving the parking that, the shopping center pays a lease for parking in this property that they're talking about, the DOT property, they're leaving there and it just compounds on the light. And maybe somebody needs to help me understand how it's.
Well, Mr. Wright, we're not, we're not really that far into that, right? This is, this is a sketch plan.
Yes.
I think when Mr. Bussel, I'm pretty sure when Mr., as a matter of fact, I know when Mr. Bussel comes back to us, he's going to have a much more detailed traffic, it's going to be laid out, where traffic patterns are going to, how they're going to move. You know, and thinking about it, I'm very well, where I live across the street, you know, I ride my golf cart over to the foreign market to buy stuff and been in your store many times, so it is, it is a, it is a problem. That's why I asked when the traffic expert was there, because if it was today, not a big deal, August is another problem. And so, I have a few thoughts on it, and when we get to that point, I'll be expressing those at the next meeting. But as you said, getting traffic, getting traffic out of Timbuktu is the problem, right? And you can't get out of a parking lot.
I don't want to come across trying to hinder them, just tell you, that's, you know, it's like, that needs, the whole area needs a big oversight, but we're, you know, I hope what they are working on works out. It's just a hundred more, of course, they'll exit up through their original right of way too, I don't understand that. But if you're adding more to the issue there, anyway. Appreciate y'all hearing me, I'm not trying to.
No, we do, thank you for.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
No, thank you for signing.
I wish I could have gotten earlier on, you know, it's just so busy, trying to keep everything indoors, I wasn't just paying at the planning level, so I'm here to know, heck, I didn't offend anybody.
No.
Not at all.
The next person I had signed up was Stephen Craddock. Did you wish to speak again, or were you signed up for the witness? Okay, all right. I had no one else signed up for the public hearing, did somebody show up late that would wish to speak on this? Yes, ma'am, I just did come up, I think I need to get you, I believe you got sworn in earlier.
Mr. Chairman, I did, I did look up on my computer when we were sitting here, there was just a few, a few recs at that intersection where he was, where Mr. Wright was discussing, so it wasn't, that was for a three-month span of the summer.
Does the staff got a Bible, we got to get a swan. Yes, yeah, there's a Bible right up there. Just need to swear again, if you could raise your hand. Do you saw him swear the evidence that you provide will be the whole truth, not the truth, so I hope you got it?
I did.
Thank you. If you could just state your name and address for the records, please.
Marshall Honesing, 133 Seapree Drive, South North Carolina.
Thank you.
And I have a shop in the same shopping center as Tommy does, and everything he said is accurate. I just wanted to add some things to that. We're paying five hundred dollars a month, every month, for more than ten years now to end dot. We're paying seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, every month, that's twelve months a year, to Mr. Johnson so that we could have a small parking lot behind the Brewthru Building when he first pull into the complex. What is the incentive for us having paid over sixty thousand dollars all these years to have parking? And to know that the produce stand will be used to have an entrance to this, what is a very nice sounding project? I mean, it's someplace I'd want to go visit myself. But based on the letters I get on Facebook, since I work for Timbuktu, number one, the number one complaint is there's no place to park the car. The other thing I wanted to address is the buildings are going to be elevated, like, for underground parking. Well, that's great, but our underground parking in both buildings have huge problems when it rains. There's over six inches of water, and those parking lots can't be used. Now, that's got to mean there's a problem with drainage, that's just common sense. If you've got six inches of water under the two buildings and you can't park, and you lose, you know, you're losing hundreds of parking spaces. And then when you come in, they used to be a crosswalk to cross, to Buck Island into Timbuktu. They got rid of the crosswalk. But what happens is that whole area over there goes underwater. So, people would have a hard time walking into the complex. I have no problem with the project going through, just like Tommy says. I just want to make sure that this parking situation is addressed. And one of the things I thought of, which I'll just share with you, is since we're paying seven fifty a month for the parking lot by Mr. Johnson that he owns, maybe the county can work a deal out where they could buy that small parking lot and then the space behind it. And that would become a municipal parking lot, a public parking lot. And that would help all the ventures that are interested in developing up there. And even with the housing, if you have more retail stores, that means you might have people who used to live in a city, and they're young, and they're married, and they might have children, and they might want to move down to Currituck. And they might not know about the problem with the schools. But it is something to keep in mind in back of your head if, if things keep going the way they are, because this may not be the only pandemic, which pushes people out of the city and towards places like this. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, thank you.
I have a question for you, ma'am. So, you said you paid seven fifty to James Johnson, I guess, right?
Coastal property.
Coast, coast line. That is you individually or the other, other association? The association pays that money?
The association pays it, we have very high dues, we pay it every month, it's been more than ten years.
Right.
That I've made out that check, and I've made out the other check for more than, for more than ten years. And Mr. Johnson can change his mind at any moment and say, you know, forget it, we're not going to let you park the cars back there. I don't know how, we maintain it, we hire people to come in and pave it and to make sure there's enough rock so nobody gets stuck in the sand.
Right. No, I parked back there, I know exactly what you're talking about.
We ruined the car parking.
Yeah, that, that shopping center is notoriously underserved with parking. And I have a place across the street in Monterey, and we frequently see people parking on our side of the street, if you will, and crossing. And, you know, you mentioned the crosswalk, I just want to let you and anybody else know that we moved that, that, to the light because we put a pedestrian crossing light in there. That is why we took it away from Buck Island, so we didn't have a crosswalk here, crosswalk here, crosswalk here, and.
Which they do anyway.
With the greenway moving as well, it was able to facilitate moving people to a controlled access point to walk across the street.
And I'm sure a lot of people park in the Food Lion parking lot, which I think is a big problem for Food Lion.
Yeah, it is, that's Monterey Plaza, most people call it Food Lion, yeah, nobody knows where the sign is for Monterey Plaza, it's a DQ sign. But that is actually Monterey Plaza, but you're, you're correct, it is, it is an ongoing problem. And I know the staff, county staff dealt with that years and years ago, and had to really look at how parking works. And, and a lot of changes came out of that over the years. So, unfortunately, the age of that development has facilitated problems with the future, so. In today's time, so, but thank you for coming out this evening, I appreciate it.
Just so aware again that if, if this gets approved tonight, this portion of it, they would have to bring some significant drawings that would address, and we would question too about the parking, the travel, the access point, so that would be, that would have to be another application, would have to get approved before we go forward.
See, a municipal parking lot would make everybody happy, that's why it's Timbuktu, it would be simple.
Thank you again for coming and providing the information.
My pleasure.
Thank you. I have nobody else signed up, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the, the public hearing portion of this. And didn't know if the applicant had any closing remarks or not, or.
Only this, you're not waiving any future objection. Development is an expensive process, and prices of materials are going up, so we would like to move as far along as we can. Two very legitimate points have been raised, which we respect, about the KAMA approval and the DOT approval. If we don't get that, then the ballgame is over, and you're not waiving that objection tonight. We produced, I think, four or five experts. I hope you, you're not required by law to believe them, but you have to have pretty good reason not to, which I don't see is apparent. And anyway, thank you for your attention to spin along here, and I appreciate the time you've given us, thank you.
Thank you. Any deliberation with the board on this? If not, I'll go ahead and ask the board for some action.
Well, Mr. Chairman, since this is my side of the island, I will move to approve PB eighty-seven dash fifty-six Monterey Shores Parcel Ten amended sketch plan slash special use permit because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the review standards of the UDO. And as agreed to by Mr. Bussel, the TRC review comments provided in the staff report shall become conditions of approval. And as an additional comment, the PUD overview and summary of usage shall be adopted to clearly illustrate open space areas and commercial areas consistent with the area summary provided. The use will not endanger the public health or safety, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or budding lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. The use will be in conformity with the land use plan, and there are several policies that I will call out that, that support this. Policy HN one, policy HN three, policy CD eight, policy ES one. We have policies OB one and OB two, which rarely get used, and policy PA one. And lastly, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities.
Here, we have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Okay, move on to the next. Okay, let's take another five-minute recess, please, thank you. Reconvene, a regular board meeting, and the next item is the new business. We have board appointments, first one, we have a fire and EMS advisory board appointment, and I believe.
Chairman, I would recommend that we put in the motion that the MoYoc representatives be in place for.
George Thies.
Mike.
Mike, sir, are you going to?
Not, sorry, not that Mike, am I, am I seeing Mike?
Everybody looks at me.
I'll, I'll second his motion.
Motion to second, any?
Chairman, a comment?
Yes, sir.
Just as a point of clarity, that is not the MoYoc, there is not an assigned seat for a fire department on the FIAB.
It's a consensus, right?
It is a consensus, but there's specific categories that individuals need to fulfill, and he, he meets the requirements for that. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, I guess all in favor?
Aye.
And a question, Leanne, if you will make sure that Chief Melton knows ASAP, as well as get that letter put out, because we have a meeting next Monday, and he should, if at all possible, it'd be good to have him. Thanks.
I'm sure he's watching it from home right now.
All right, and the next we have a, it's another consensus, Whalehead Stormwater Drainage Service District Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate George Mears to fill that position.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other discussion on it, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, thank you. Okay, the next item is going to be the consent agenda.
Move for.
For approval.
So, motion and a second from Commissioner Owen. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn our regular meeting.
Second.
Second, and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and now I'll convene this board of commissioners into the special meeting of Tourism Development Authority. I believe we have the TDA budget, is that, I agree, do you have this?
Budget amendments?
We have a TDA budget. Has Buzz's budget amendments in here for the TDA?
Let's start on two thirteen.
Two thirteen, thank you.
Ever flood insurance for maritime UCM?
Bears, magnates. Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the amendments.
Except three hundred dollar.
Okay, that's fine, just, okay, no other, no further questions from the board? All right, we have a motion for approval and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Aye, all opposed? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn from the, okay, a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for a great evening, this evening, everyone.